So with that being said, ladies and gentlemen, this is.
I was afraid, you know, I didn't know what to do. A lot of us becoming in it.
And what I'll say was amazing to me was.
Season two, welcome back to the L three perspective. My name is Glenn Davis. As you know, I'm sitting here with my co-host.
Coach Cam.
L three perspective, as you know, when we talk about life, about leadership.
As we've talked about in the past, like, love, share, subscribe, tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like. But at the end of the day, we do it for you guys.
We are back season two of the L three perspective. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm sitting here with my co-host Cameron Macias.
Hey, Coach Cam.
Yes. And again, just want to thank you and welcome you back to the L three perspective. We have a special guest today, but before I introduce him, I'm gonna toss it over to Cam and then we'll dive into it.
Hey, as you guys already know, like, love, share, subscribe, tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like. At the end of the day, we do it for y'all. So if we don't know what you like or who you want to hear from, then we're just gonna keep doing what we're doing. And that's not the whole point. So make sure you hit that button. But today. So first, let me say this is our second time recording. As anybody who's in audio visual, y'all know sometimes technology is not our best friend. So we appreciate Essex for the second time because he was a good sport, came back because he had great information because cameras and audio was just tripping. So anyways, we back at it and we appreciate it.
Yes, yes, yes. So I wanted to just do a quick intro. So Essex Cook is a husband, father of three, right? And Sassoon City Commissioner for over 15 years. Essex has made a lasting impact on the community using his sparkling personality and dedication to uplift those around him. As Vice President of Communications for Black Elected Officials of California and co-founder of HBHF, which is Handle Biz, Have Fun. He blends community engagement with leadership. From Buffalo to California, Essex has fostered growth through mentorship and civic leadership, all while balancing the joys of family life. Ladies and gentlemen, Essex Cook.
Doesn't get old hearing that part. Man, I'm like, uh, man, I'm getting old.
Yeah. Well, first and foremost, man, again, you know, just kind of echoing what Cam was saying, we appreciate your flexibility again on coming back. We had a dope conversation the first time. You bring a lot of love, you bring a lot of value, bring a lot of, a lot of a lot, right? And so I want to just kind of start off by asking, so obviously highlighting over 15 years of civic leadership or community leadership. What inspired you to become that community leader?
Born and raised in Vallejo, just got me into it. I tore my knee coming out of high school. So that dynamic, that fork in the crossroad, we were like, which way do I go? I want to have fun. I still want to go to college with all my friends, but I'm limping. And you start seeing, you don't even know, I probably, I was with no meniscus running around doing crazy stuff, thinking I'm just Superman, like I'm Wolverine. That aspect of I'm human kind of kid. It's no college, I think I'm running track, doing everything. Back in Vallejo, Cross Road, Boys and Girls Club, Program Aid opens up, tried real estate, stock market crash, and why I tried to be a loan officer really cool. No real estate, everybody always look cool with the pictures, you know, things like that. But going into the Boys and Girls Club, I have a family who's really church-based, family-based, big, close-knit. So going to the Boys and Girls Club, it caused me to become Program A volunteer. They asked me, hey, can you build, can you build a movie theater downstairs for the kids? I'm like, sure. Did that, built it into a whole live production, had the, had the screens going. Next thing you know, I'm there longer, my cousin's mentoring me, and it just became more, more of a calling of, oh, this is what it is. So that's how I really started. But I was working young, my uncle's own building, working at Ray's, probably started working at like 11, like just always in the working mode, always doing my hands. So those parts, seeing shows going, being part of the older Vallejo events, the old Juneteens, that old rich culture, those part, I was always around there. Kyrie with Young Black Brothers, man, just history in the music, named my uncle David, he always used to be in the music entertainment scene. So that, that, that environment was always around me, comfortable around shows, just things going on. That's really like edged it off in the Boys and Girls Club, kind of put the cherry on top.
Nice, nice.
And so we see you moving everywhere around, around this area, right?
Everywhere.
Everywhere. And so, you know, when we talked last time, you talked a lot about kind of that evolution, like you just said, like how you went from being doing real estate to stocks to then being involved. What are like some of the big things you're trying to bring to the community that you grew up in? Because I know, you know, like I said, I was here 16 years ago. And then I came back and it was the same place. And you never want to see a community, and that's between, and that's Solano County. I mean, Vacaville grew, obviously. But like Fairfield, Cordelia, Vallejo, all that just Sassoon, it was just like stuck in time, right? Like I came back and I remember it's like, oh, I don't even have to like learn anything new because it's all just like, with the experience that you, that you've had, like what are you trying to bring here now?
Spoke on a little bit mask off. There's no competition between if I like media, if I like just engagement, if I like taxes, I don't want to compete with you. I want to kind of share wealth and knowledge.
Agreed.
Just seen yesterday, the Boys and Girls Club, they actually demolished the building, which kind of broke my heart.
In Vallejo?
Yeah, they demolished it because they're gonna rebuild the original Boys and Girls.
Okay.
Even though I know it's something that's going to be rebuilt and hopefully done for the better, it's still the history. I want to show people that they don't have to be scared of it, especially somebody coming from Vallejo, from Markens Sawyer. Remember running out of my house two times because they were doing donuts and next thing you know, there's a car in my living room or on the side, right where the gas line is. Those things is like, I'm not scared of my, my past or my history or things I experienced. It's just life skills. But as I go, grown into me more, I see that as valuable when you're talking to these businesses. It's an insight that some people can't see. And it's not disrespect to anybody or their vision of what they went through, but it's showing, hey, let's have these healthy conversations, just how we're able to sit here and conversate now. That's what I want to kind of breed out to even my generation. Right now, if I post, I do things like that way, this generation of technology, it's like I'm boasting. It's like I'm trying to show, but I'm like, no, when are we gonna see that? We are the aunties and uncles stepping up now. We have to do it like, we have to step in. It's a renaissance call. And then if it's a renaissance call for a renaissance dinner table, we need to come sit down together and eat together, not compete. What kind of dinner is this if we're competing? Just like you said, coming back home, I don't want to compete with the people that was here that I grew up in high school with, who had a hard time. And now they can't feel, they can't do anything, get back on their horse.
Yeah.
I wear a hat, why can't I get on my horse? If I want to wear a beanie today, why can't I wear a beanie?
Yeah.
Those attitudes where I'm coming back in is the dysfunction that I kind of see. You guys put a stature, somebody would, somebody want to do, wants to come in and do something right. It's like church, come as you are, but then you judged.
Yeah.
We don't gotta be churchy. We don't gotta do any of that. Just because you have a nine to five doesn't make it better than mine. We all grind. What do you now? What do you do after work? And always ask people, how you doing? Soon as they start talking about work, lost me. What did you do after work?
Yep.
Even if you're going into your wife and kids and things like that, it's good, but what did you do? Like, listen, like, what are you into? That's a hard question for people to ask, answer.
I have a two-folded question. One, when I first came to, started going to events around Solano County, like I noticed you in your hat, like you're always consistent. Number one, what's the significance behind the hat? And then number two, you had mentioned family, like as a community leader, like you're like heavily involved in the community. How do you like counterbalance, right? And your bio had the joys of life or the balance of joys of life or family life? How do you, how do you balance that?
That, nah, okay, I'll go with the first one, the hat. The hat is, it's, it's really like a hoodie for me, a hat, like somewhere I can kind of hide under. Like I said, I'm still from a, from a comfortability wearing hoodies and things like that. My mother told me, why are you in the building wearing a ball cap? Well, I'll wear my cowboy hat, you know, and I'm wearing confidently.
You're right.
Y'all understand the optics, but let me go with something I'm comfortable in. You know, I wear a hat, I wear the same color hat. It doesn't have, they say you gotta wear the light one in the, in the summer. I'm like, eh, rules, 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 rules. I'm obliged, but I'm gonna do it the way I kind of want to. So the hat is still something I like because it blocks everything. It's never was for a show. It's the people started coining them like, this is my comfort zone. Like this is the need kind of hiding through it all. And then going back to the joys of the family, that part is important because when I'm around my family, I don't have a hat on. If the hat's gone, my kids probably stepped on it, you know, and that's where it is, lay the hat at the door and come in and enjoy them. So coming in early, I remember at the Boys and Girls Club, those feelings of trying to lead through my trepidations or anxiety because it's coming at me fast. Coming home, I found out how to debrief, hanging out with my family. Like if you ask my family, coming home, it was night and day. During the day, Boys and Girls Club, still personality, loving, doing everything, but then when I come home, I never talked about it. So at a young age, my family never knew what I was really up to. They're like, they're thinking I'm going to the Boys and Girls Club. I'm doing, I'm hosting my family's birthday party things there. So that, that fine line, there's work relationship and then there's real world relationships. Coming home, sitting down, watching TV, enjoying, not controlling my house. There's those little aspects that I picked up on because I'm doing it all day.
Right.
You don't want to come home and have to feel that way, but then you don't want to complain and bicker.
Yeah.
So it's that balance of enjoying the love and that embracement that my family can build, it's like a recharge. Coming back, now it's bringing the same thing that I felt from my family. I feel like favor isn't fair. Why can't I run into my mother, my father, or my aunties, my uncles, or all of my cousins? It feels so free when I come back to these other areas. Me and my wife is talking about kids with school lunch day. My, my daughter forgot her lunch. My, aw, man, she was like, well, let's like, I'm raising my hand to go get some lunch, just like all the other kids, you know? I'm like, how many other kids raised their hand for lunch? It's like, she has a vivid memory. She had like nine kids. I'm thinking, dang, can I have some lunch? Like we are bringing them like, she's like, yeah, dad, you want to bring snacks for everybody, but they can't. And that heart that I see that she wants to bring for her friends, like I don't just want to feel like favor is only fair to me, like God only loves me, but how can we balance this? So it's that joy of understanding I'm, I'm loved, I'm cared about, I have a foundation, I have strong words behind me. But if it's so strong, then why isn't helping other people? So that's something I battle and try not to wear too hard with the hat.
So, so Glenn and I often talk about, you know, between the two of us, we have nine children, 10 actually, five, nine in our house is currently 10, yeah. And so, but between us, you know, neither of us had a full-time father. You did. And so one of the things we talk about a lot is like mentorship and having people in our circle. And one of the things we agree is that it's hard for both of us to find someone who we can communicate with and ask for advice about being a father, stuff like that, right? But you growing up, like you told, your parents are still married, your father, you know, taught you a lot of good lessons, like what do you bring into your, like being a father lessons, but also like what do you change?
And the answer isn't going to change from last time. I should switch it up and throw it, it just lie.
You had some great points last time. So like, I really want to make sure we bring those back, right?
And it's the same thing because my father yesterday is the same father I had to have today. It's those life lessons that, like I said, I feel, I feel kind of like favor isn't fair. It's, it's an odd feeling because me and my dad can go odds. And now at this time, I can see, okay, it's a respect thing. My dad, active owner-operator through his twenties up into his thirties, thinking he has it going on, but learning that I'm 36 and seeing that growth of where he was at and still respecting it. Even though I'm like, yo, can you not put a Dell computer in my name? You know, just those little aspects that you see as a father and you're like, you, you were doing what you had to do, whether time, everything was there. That it didn't get to teach you how to do it right, or any credit is something new. So, you know, you're like, oh, shoot, well, let's use this number. You know, and I get it because he's still thinking about investing in our future. Shoot, seven years, it's all going to be off my credit anyway. So now. It's just those aspects, it, when I go back out and I can hear the aspects of friends without fathers and things like that, the things that they go through. It's the mirror, it's the man in the mirror. It always is. And bringing it back to my kids, I can reflect with the man in the mirror. Because even though me and my father, we share the same name, we're still two totally different people. Temperament, everything, our demeanor, exactly the same. We get to talking, going deeper, you're going to get two different perspectives. And this politics, my dad is my worst enemy. I'm like, man, who you going for? Is this a debate? Or we, I'm just trying to help, you know, but you know, it's just those aspects. I love my father because in the aspect of now coming in and seeing him as a grandfather, he gets to give my kids candy and leave.
You want some coffee beans?
What I dealt with, you know, it's those aspects that is different. Like growing into it, like me and my dad, you know, I played a lot of sports. He wanted to coach me through everything. Going, so you have that, that, that going at it and that mutual respect is so bliss to understand and have a conversation with my father. And, and healthy testosterone coming off, like grew up scared of my father, like that discipline, order, stretcher. And my dad, my dad worked on, he was working on this truck and he's always get you, like snatch you up. This is in the eighties, I'm an eighty baby.
You can't get him now.
And he's like, look, baby, baby, now I'm telling you, baby. But then he used to snatch you up and he cut his finger, right? Cut the tender and he couldn't tend and he couldn't bend his finger. But that temperament and even at a young age, my dad showed me so much patience, even when I, and I'm a crazy kid, like, why are you jumping off things? Why are you doing things like that? That temperament like, it showed me so much and so little instances, instances that helped me even with my friends and the grace that we have with each other as males, like, man, it is tough. They didn't teach us this. There is no handbook for this. And leadership as a father, we're all going to be different. That part is like the craziest aspect of looking in the mirror and understanding somebody has your same name, Essex Allen Cook. Two totally different people, like two totally different people, but the same heart. That's crazy.
So when you mentioned leadership, one of the things that Cam and I, I won't just say very skilled dad, but we've grown to love for in our military career is leadership development, right? And so being a husband, a father, right, civic leader, what are some leadership principles that are like, that's your core? And you never strive away from, from these principles, both inside your home and outside the home?
That's a good one. The principles, I'm very morally and principle-based, so the principles lie and lie and really it's, it always goes into love. Like that unconditional thing, you can go into, go to church, read the Ten Commandments, but it is treat your neighbor like you treat yourself. But there's always context in there. But my biggest biblical is talking to Moses, don't, don't get caught up with the mass, don't get caught up with the noise. Don't answer when, when you feel uncomfortable. It's okay to breathe, give yourself grace. So that principle along with grace and loving your family is going to help. Because that love that you give yourself is really going to emulate out. So I try to teach my, teach my kids that we're here to serve. And if somebody asks you to walk one mile, let's believe you're going to walk two. That first mile is going to be a great conversation. Now that next mile back is going to be a lonely one where you reflect to yourself. So be willing to be able to go out there and love on somebody, but love yourself back when you're walking back alone. So those aspects and those principles as a leader, you know, you gotta leave from the back, you gotta leave from the front, you gotta leave from the middle. There's so many aspects that comes with leadership that it changes in the, through your trepidations. If you're leading through your trepidations and that's just through your own fears or whatever you've been through in life, then you're going to lead somebody down the wrong path on an hour that you weren't filling up on it. So when you're stepping out of it, you step back, this perspective, L three, here we go. You know, I come in, I tell them, you know, you have the flesh, you're going to feel it, it's going to hurt. Next, you have the spiritual realm. Oh, let me see how they're doing. Okay, ooh, that they're, they're, they're combating or they're angry or they're just sad or depressed. Third, I, when you step back and that perspective has to change because you're just looking at it all. So I tell my kids, remove yourself, I tell my wife, remove yourself kind of from that emotion, that perversion. That principle, it's just don't pervert the world because you don't love it or see it the same way somebody else does. Those principles and morals, it has to run in, because if you're principle-based, you're not going to be there. But if you're morally based, then it's too emotional, but it has to have that balance. It's always balance.
I think something in like, especially in today's world, is that balance piece, right? There's so much like information being given to you on a second minute, hour, daily basis. And emotions can, can make you say weird things. Like I heard someone talk about, and this was, this was years ago, when during the election, it was like, oh, I hope this person gets killed. And I was like, you realize that's a person. Like that's, that's, that's a person. This person has a family, they have children, they have a spouse, like think what you will of this person, but that's not okay. What was funny was the, the, the comments that came after is then it was like, oh, so you support this person? Said, no, I support people.
Were really tribal.
Yes.
And it sucks because it happens to a fault. Sorry.
No, you're good.
You put me in the sense, like I said, my brother played in the NFL, he was drafted, I can't, years ever getting bad, in the 2010s.
You're only 36, sexy.
Four scores and seven years ago, we, nah, Sven it now. But the tribal part, I seen, I seen the ugly side of even sports. Darius Hayward-Bay, family, a close relative. The Steelers game when he was playing with the Raiders, seeing him get hit. I'm not a Raiders fan, but that was crushing, knowing the backside of it all. Seeing my brother break his back on the field because he, because the quarterback threw a bad pass behind him, like the human factor. It softened me up because, you know, we grew up watching football, like, yeah. And going from the political standpoint, it is that conversation where you have, it's like, yo, you're going to pencil whoop yourself. You're going to have something written down where everybody can come back to and be like, no, on this day, this is here, and this is that microwave society that we live in and it kind of, going back to what we trying to change. These quick things aren't helping. It's the Cobra effect. You say, oh, I need help because cobras are attacking me. Next thing you know, they're killing all the cobras and now we have a problem. That's Cobra effect. It's those simple things where you're like, you're thinking you're helping the cause and you're thinking you're doing these things, but it's very tribal when you're really hurting because it's a.
Yeah.
You perverted sports where it could have been fun and things healthy competitive, but now it's bloodbath.
No, for sure. Well, it becomes like a what's good for you doesn't mean it's good for everybody.
There you have it.
And society has created this place where it's like, oh, because, you know, I don't agree with what you're doing, it just should not be like that. And it's like, no. In retrospect, like I saw a clip of Elon Musk in an interview and he was like, if people, people saying things that you don't like and you don't like them, that's what gives speech meaning. Because you don't like what they're saying, so now it has meaning. But if someone's saying everything you like, or all you hear is things that you like, there's no contrast now and it loses meaning.
Toxic positivity. Everybody wants to hear the positive, but it's so toxic sometimes. Yeah, keep on going down that road. You gonna get there.
Toxic positivity.
That's a first. Care to elaborate, sir?
Toxic positivity, guys. Like I said, we get in the realms where we don't want to hurt people's feelings, social media, we don't want to say things bad, use trepidation like three times already. But it, it's, it's like, sometimes we gotta tell people the truth and it's how you deliver it. Sometimes you think you're doing it, but it's so toxic because you really didn't help that person. Knowing from the flip side, from the person you're giving the positivity to, they're going to say, thank you for this positive information, then you went on about your life. It's very toxic to just sit there and if you're not really going to help somebody and giving them those right words, and sometimes you don't say nothing, just like with the politics. Don't say you're going to kill somebody if you're not going to kill them. Now FBI is on your Instagram, liking your pictures. Yeah, like this one, oh, this one's interesting, we're going to tie it in. Sometimes we gotta tell people to stop.
For sure.
Simple. Sometimes we gotta tell them, you know, eating bad things, high salt will hurt you. It's okay. Let's not go out and I'm gonna eat it one more time with you. One thing, at the Solano Young Trail Blazers, a lot of mentors we go to named Ty, actual wine.
Yes, especially around here.
I didn't want the tickets out. I went near, I'm a sober-minded person. I don't drink. I will drink wine, but I'm not going there to drink that part. What are we introducing to our generation this next thing is, this is what you need to get it going, like, ooh. Come on, margarita party. Like that stuff has to be kind of dead when we are talking about helping some people.
I agree. Yeah, no, no, I agree. I mean, we, I mean, I don't drink, G doesn't, I mean, neither of it, I mean, I'd have coffee, that's.
G money doesn't drink.
G money don't drink, G money. But, but when we do things, we don't, you know, like we do barbecues at our house, there's no alcohol. Hey, if you want to bring your own, be my guest, but have a plan because I won't let you leave. And if you, I mean, there might be soda, so you can use a soda if you want, but in general, like this is a sober spot, you know? At my wedding, I think, I think I just provided whatever just I still had from when I was drinking, right? But it was like, if you want anything else, you bring it yourself, dog. No, you're right. As far as not enough of us are comfortable just like saying things. I was, I had a conversation with someone and they were like talking and, or I was talking, excuse me, and they like hijacked the conversation. And it was funny because they were telling me information they had told me the day prior. And so I think like three or four minutes goes by and I was like, okay, that's enough. And I said, hey, can I tell you something real quick? And they said, yeah. And I said, I didn't ask you for any of that shit. And I said, not to mention, you told me that yesterday. And I said, so you kind of wasted like three or four minutes of my life, you know? And I said, I was talking, you hijacked the, the conversation. It's all good. I'm not mad about it, but I need to let you know so you can be more cognizant of it later because you do have a tendency to do that. And, you know, most people be like, oh my God, like that person must have been so mad. And they, they thanked me. They were like, I wish more people would make me aware of the things that I'm just, like I'm aware of it after the fact, but like in the moment, I'm not thinking about it and nobody, and everyone's so nice, they don't say nothing about it. And so I just assume that it's, unconsciously assume it's okay. And it's not okay. It's just, we're so nice, we don't want to hurt nobody's feelings.
You won't know if your breath stinks because you can't smell your own breath.
I want to, so Cam, when he was talking about like, you know, even at the barbecues, no alcohol, the thought that popped in my head was, you know, creating the environment, right? And so not even just talking about leadership, just in general, one of the things that we're really big on is always creating the environment, right? Whether it's a barbecue, whether it is, you know, we sitting down with our business, our clients within the business or whatever, it's like, I feel that it's very, very important to create that environment, right? To have that level of excellence. I realize a lot of the clients that Cam and I have sat down with in the last five months mainly grew up somewhere in Solano County, right? Me not being from Solano County, you know, one of the things that Cam and I are constantly talking about as far as with our business is to, to raise the bar, right? And to make sure that we're very big on collaboration. But with that, just making sure that we are creating an environment of excellence, right? From the conversations to the sitting down with the clients, to providing them services, to the podcast, all that. And so, you know, what are some of the things that you do to create the environment? Because you're in a lot of different rooms, right? And it's not just the hat, right? Like you bring, you bring a level of excellence to those rooms. And so could you kind of talk a little bit about that?
So art, I like artists. I like that facet because it's always a blank canvas. So when going into talking with people, consulting cohort and, Cam, you hit it right on the head. You don't, you let them kind of talk and you kind of pull out those pointers where you are. That's fun. That's cool. And you kind of let them hear their process. If you're going therapy, it's a process. If it's God, it's bearing witness. Hey, let me bear witness what God is about doing in your life. So that process is I'm going through, it's consulting and hearing, okay, I hear where your heart is. I know where, I can never take your heart away. I'll never be like, if it's fishing, I'll never be like, oh, you can't fish no more, man. Just go into buying the boat and net. So those aspects of where we're coming into, it's. So those aspects of where we're coming into, it's, we, we have to set those boundaries of not taking our dreams and trying to put it on people and understand things are template. There's nothing new under the sun, that we, we can't reinvent the wheel, we can just add to it. So those things like that is where can I help push and gain you momentum in your dream? And how can I support? Because I don't want to be the main focus of your dream, that would be a nightmare one day. And so it's like those aspects of consulting, finding their true heart, finding out where they're at, understanding that they're not the person that, that the job is not going to define them, that they're a person operating the job or operating that machine. So I try to find who, who that person really is, whether it's art, their true industries, communication, whatever the case may be, just help bring them into it and create that healthy space for them to be able to express themselves.
Got you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So as we, we gear up to wrap up, I, I want to kind of bring something back. So last time that we talked, I had mentioned, um, this book that I'm reading called Dialled In. And so the reason why I want to bring it up now is because you mentioned the word boundaries. And I asked you guys a question around that. And so what I got from the first couple of chapters, uh, I kind of really, really took myself back to kind of look at it from a wider lens. And, um, an area that I'm, that I'm constantly looking to grow in is, you know, uh, father, son, husband, right? And, and leader, obviously, the leadership realm. And so the book took me to a space where, um, it was about, okay, how am I re- recalibrating myself as a man, as a father, as a husband, um, as a leader? And so, uh, for both of you guys, as we wrap up, both of you mentioned the word boundaries last time we talked. Could you expand on, um, based off of that piece of it, expand on boundaries and, and its importance to you, you guys?
Yeah. So, so boundaries in my house specifically, uh, with, with how many kids we have. So like, people always gawk when I say, oh, I got five kids. And they're like, oh my God, how do you do anything? How do you and your wife have relationship? How do you work? How do you, you know, like, uh, because I'm a person. But, uh, boundaries is a big side of it, especially in my house as far as like, like spending time with my wife. You know, like we go on a walk every night. Kids know, know you cannot come. I love you, but that is, that is my time to, to debrief, right? That's like, we leave the phones in the house, we go on a walk, we talk about our days, we talk about our parenting. We, you know, we talk about our, we, all these things, right? That's time for us to just like connect. We see the neighbors, weird stuff happens, whatever. And so, but that's just time for us, right? And then, you know, um, when I get over one with my kids, when everyone's trying to ask me a question at all the same time, I need you to stop. I need like two minutes to like now decompress because you guys just came at me hella quick. And then one at a time, please. And then we can like move through the conversations. And then, um, like with the people around me, you know, like, most people know that I only answer a phone call if you call me out the blue, if you're a certain person in general. If you are not a certain person, I will normally like text you. Hey, what's up? What do you, what do you need? How can I help you? You want to talk? Here's my calendar link. So, you know, in, in retrospect, but that's, that's how I control, right? Because we get, we can get pulled so many different ways with all the things that we're doing and, and it's that nicety piece of it, right? Like, oh, I don't want to be rude. You're not being rude. I'm still creating a space for you. It's just a space that works better for my life at this current juncture. Yeah.
Boundaries for me, just like the game basketball, everything, um, the crowds, the crowd, the players are the players. They tell you that before the game. Respect it, parents be parents and let's play. So even the boundaries where me, my family, my wife, my kids, that balance is, this is the game, this is the house. This is where we're at. You're going to have hecklers, we're going to have long row games, back to backs. But these boundaries that we set, we don't let the groupies come in. We don't let the fandoms come in. Who is these yes man sons that's allowing you to do this, daughter? What is, what is this coming from? Understanding that we know it didn't come from our household. Understanding the healthy boundaries that we set up in our, in our court, our healthy playing area, that this is where we're at and they're observing us play. So no, understanding what our healthy boundaries and what we look like playing, whether I'm reacting to a bad foul call from my wife, like, lady, I didn't foul you. Keep it simple, you know, from women coming in, from jealous men who just want to be around because it just doesn't happen. We always say, okay, it's going to come from one, the woman or the men just want to come in and try to take your ID. I would just set up those boundaries and saying that healthy thing in the first, asking people upfront, taking them off face value when they're coming to you in that approach. And you say, some people don't know better. Some people don't know their breaths, so they don't come at you stinky.
Yeah.
And it's like, okay, it's going to be up to you to be aware to smell this company. And if you don't, then your boundaries have to be set because you're allowing it to sneak up your nose.
Yeah.
And you're allowing that to come in, are you? So those boundaries, as I set up as a father in this analogy I'm using as a man or leader is, I'm Essex first. Then I'm husband, or man of God, husband, then going into these. All right, now let me break it down and simplify it. Can't go further. If I'm burnt out, I'm burnt out, son, but mother here too. And sometimes she might be burnt out, so it's movie night with popcorn. Simplify, simplify it, boundaries. Why are you calling me at nine o'clock about social media management? Because your brain jumped on and you, you're telling me, oh, I'm excited, but that fire has to wait. I don't like when people take food off my table anymore. When I was younger, yeah, you can have all the biscuits I have kids eat. There's boundaries that have to set up with growth in time. It's a, it, there's no rulebook for the boundaries that's being set because it's something that's always being built with, on top of your foundation. You're building new walls, you're building a fireplace for warmth, you're getting a bed. But those things are going to change. You might come up in an empty room, but know your boundaries, your four walls are surrounding you and know that's your safe haven. And I ended with this one, even with the babies when they, when, when we had our babies, two, three months. This is their safetiness. They're going to be comfortable here. So no, we don't want a lot of faces around. Usually we don't go three months, that's crazy. But we want to say that to keep people like, hey, don't bombard us even as we're coming out the transition with these boundaries. But what we did is we created a comfort place with love and brace and warmth in our house for our kids. And that's with your five kids and four for you because we're combining. So twelve all together with my three, I'm doing math.
It's our whole team.
And then as we go in, the next generation, our twelve understand what us three did. And that should go on. Those, those boundaries that we're setting is like a pasture for our kids to go run off into. Are we doing that? We setting up those gates and those boundaries. Boundaries are boundaries for a reason.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I wanted to ask that question because like, I feel like as men, um, men don't talk about boundaries enough, right? Or at least, you know, some of the spaces that I've been in, in Solano County, uh, very rarely do I hear that, right? And so when I go back to talking about like Cam and I creating that, creating those, uh, the, those conversations, um, within those rooms, that's one of the topics, right? And so appreciate you guys sharing, um, you know, life, love, leadership. Speaking of life, love, leadership, if you can close this out sixty seconds or less, pick one of those words, life, love, or leadership, and just kind of share with our listeners, whatever's on your heart.
I think trep- not playing. I know what I said last time. It's always leadership because leadership entails with the heart, love, it entails with all that. If you're a great leader, I spoke on it before, you can lead from the ba- from the back, the middle or the front. That leadership factor is going to show either hung- you're a humble leader, uh, egotistical. And you might le- lead through totalitarianism, which means scaring people. But that leadership always going to have to come to the heart of things and the love and the life and that perspective, that's always going to reel you back into what you're doing. A leader is not something that you can be made to, into. Sometimes you're born as it, as a young, as a young adolescent just coming into this world. That's what has been on you. Carry that leadership, do not let the other things define you. And the last thing about that leadership thing, um, Bible reader Moses struck the rock once. He said to speak to God and listen to them, don't listen to the noise. So as a leader, there's going to be loud, there's going to be crazy, but there's no handbook for it. Understand and trust what you have and talking to God, talking to yourself, your loved ones around. Share it very, 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 very smallly. Don't just go and give your heart to everybody. Find that person that you want, that leadership that can help you with that long walking journey. But really, leadership out of all that, love is going to come with it and life is going to come with being a good leader.
Let's go. Go ahead, Cam.
Hey, like, love, share, subscribe. Tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like, but at the end of the day, let us know. Healthy perspective, we out. Appreciate you. Peace.
So with that being said, ladies and gentlemen, this is.
I was afraid, you know, I didn't know what to do. A lot of us becoming in it.
And what I'll say was amazing to me was,
season two, welcome back to the L three perspective. My name is Glenn Davis. As you know, I'm sitting here with my co-host, Cam. L three perspective, as you know, we talk about life, love, leadership.
As we've talked about in the past, like, love, share, subscribe. Tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like, but at the end of the day, we do it for you guys.